We take call to order this meeting of Plain Township Board of Trustees for Tuesday, September 8th, if everybody else can, and the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before us begin, have the agendas presented. Are there any additions, dealitions, or corrections by fellow board members or department heads at this time?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have additions and communications from our residents, so I'll read.
Anyone else? Under Concerned Trustees? Any additional? Okay, the agenda will stand as amended. I'm going to let the record reflect, wherever we're at at 6:15, we will have a hard, immediate stop to adjourn the public hearing for zoning amendment, and then we'll pick back up with our business as scheduled. First item is the Sheriff's report, to which I have nothing noted. Is there anybody in the crowd that wishes to address the Sheriff's office with any concerns or matters? Okay. Close out the Sheriff's report, we're going to turn it over to Detective Conner for the detective's report.
Thank you. The report for August 2014, we had 868 calls for service. It was a 1.6% increase compared to what we did August 2013. We had 52 crashes, those were down. 12 crashes with injury, which was about the same. 105 alarms, 248 traffic stops, with 93 citations and 36 arrests. The alarms were up quite a bit compared to last August at 19%. Traffic stops were greatly increased by 55%. I handled seven follow-up investigations with four closed cases, aggravated robbery, vandalism, robbery, and assistance by another agency. And then again, I attached the charts with the calls for service and how we're tracking it compared to 2013, as well as just a chart for August and how we did.
Any questions by anybody? That'll close out the detective's report. Nothing under unfinished business, it's going to take us to new business, and I turn that over to our Administrator, Ms. Campbell.
Thank you. Item number one is to enter into a contract with the Stark County Sheriff to provide a school resource officer to the Plain Mobile School District for the 2014-15 school year in an amount not to exceed $61,967.16 to be paid from Fund 09A-10B. And to further resolve that, the Plain Mobile School District shall reimburse Plain Township in an amount equal to one-half of the contract, and that is not to exceed $30,983.58. And they shall reimburse Plain Township within 30 days of receiving the invoice for the utilization of this school resource officer.
I will so move on, new business number one. A second discussion, just as a point of clarity, now our contract costs have had to slightly go up, that takes into account essentially the set union negotiation rates out through the Sheriff's offices.
It does. It had not for the last nine years. For some reason, this was overlooked, so it is now up to where it should have been all along, so we did receive quite the bargain for quite some time. So it does include that all now. So we are where we should be with that.
Again, just for the record, I know we've every year made it a point that the purpose of investing in this resource officer has to do with the fact that it keeps our other patrolmen out on the streets and actually helps mitigate a lot of stuff potentially before it even happens, given the relationship that the students develop through the level of trust and so forth. So this is indeed a good thing for the township and its schools. Further discussion? Roll call. Mr. Alino?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
And Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Item number one, and number two?
Item number two is an FYI, just notifying the board that Mr. Isino and myself have put together and applied for the Lutford OTWC grant for this year, and it has been submitted. Mr. Hawes has signed off on it this year as President of the Board, and we are hopeful that as many times as we have applied, that they will look favorably upon this project, and we will be granted the funds. Judge, you want to add anything to this?
Yeah, as the Board knows, we've had problems for years on Luford. This is for the lower end, we have to do the lower end of Luford before we can do anything else. This will go from 45th Street to 49th Street, I think there are all the hills that are running into Luford. It's a $1.4 million project.
Can you repeat that?
1.4 million. We have, this is the sixth year in a row that we've applied for it. After speaking with our engineering company, we're hopeful that maybe this could be the year.
Which we already said, aside the
Matching funds.
Matching funds, and that also will go
Yeah, well.
It's just, if I could, it's just a good effort that we have been trying, and I hope our residents know that we don't let something like this rest. It's an expensive project, it's going to have to take a grant to get it to move, we already have the matching funds, and I just want our residents to know that we're trying, that it's the best we can do, and if we get this grant, then away we go.
Yeah.
It's frustrating, people have been flooded, but it's just, it's just too much for us to hope that if we get this matching plan. And Joe, won't that, hopefully if we do get this and get this project moving, will that help? Anything coming towards the 55th Street area? Could it help?
Well, basically, we can't, we had to do it in two phases because of cost, and we have to do the first phase first, you know, if we don't get the lower end done, we can't, you know, do any additional work on the north end of that whole area.
And I don't know if, hopefully, I don't know if anyone's in Luford area here, I'm not sure if they're watching on YouTube, but it would be nice if we got something out to those residents so that they know that we are making it happen, we're trying, and it's all we can do. And we're not sitting on this, we haven't been sitting on it.
Outside of our media department, select neighborhood news and the rep, hopefully, talking about it, and our website and our social media, it'd be just as a informational purpose, you know, probably the best way to give it, give it our newsletter.
Yeah. OTWC is the only funding that, it doesn't apply, CDVG funds don't apply for that area, so OTWC is our best.
Just your
It doesn't meet the requirement, so.
Thanks, Joe. That's going to conclude new business. That'll take us to our fiscal officers' report, and I'm going to turn that over to Mr. Flex.
Thank you, Mr. President. The first item on the agenda is a request for resolution to authorize a payment of pending warrants in the mod $8,420.69 as a badge.
I will so move
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Mr. Alino?
Yes.
Officer number two is a request for a resolution to authorize a payment of regular payroll in the mod not to exceed $220,000.
I will so move
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Mr. Alino?
Yes.
Officer number three is a request for a resolution to authorize payment for the following medical claims that provided by Allcare.
I will so move
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Mr. Alino?
Yes.
Officer number three is a request for a resolution to authorize a payment of regular payroll in the mod not to exceed $220,000.
I will so move
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Mr. Alino?
Yes.
Officer number three is a request for a resolution to authorize payment for the following medical claims that provided by Allcare.
I will so move for you to pay. Discussion, roll call.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Mr. Alino?
Yes.
Officer number four is the financial report.
Still our interest rates.
Officer number five is the request for a resolution for authorization as a refund for overpayments for emergency medical services requested by Ohio Building.
I will move Second. Discussion, roll call.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Alino?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Officer number six, this is a request for a resolution to adopt the best updated township procedures.
I will so move
Second.
Discussion, just as a point, this come from our internal audit committee that meets some of the changes that are in here. Instead of having associates' names, we identify the actual role, so whether it's trustee, administrator, or just a department head, just goes ahead of where it's in that position. So some of it's grammatical from that aspect, but then some of it's definitely refined based on reports we've had back from, you know, the state auditor on how to approve process and so forth. Thanks to Anthony's office and Lisa for working on this. Anything else either to you or Mr. Alino, just for that, say what I heard?
Yeah, I think most of it's just grammatical, just getting rid of instituting and things like that, calling financial institutions, it's those specific banks, different things like that.
Roll call.
Mr. Alino?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
And Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
And that'll conclude the fiscal officer's report for that.
Thank you, Mr. Flex. That is going to take us back to our administrators, for the administrators.
Thank you very much. Item number one does not require a resolution, just letting the Board and members in the audience know that we will be sponsoring another e-waste recycling week from September 22nd through the 26th, which is a Monday through Friday from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Actually, I believe, Rob, is it 8:00 a.m.?
7:00 a.m.
It's just 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. What this is, is you can bring any electronic waste to the Plain Township Hall Garage, which is located here, which means anything you can plug in, you can drop off to get rid of. So really calculators, radios, CDs, TVs, keyboards, answering machines, telephones, you can bring batteries, anything really can be brought in and dropped off. We started this when the solid waste district stopped with their drop-offs that they used to do at Kent State Stark to give our residents an opportunity to get rid of those types of electronic devices. No household hazardous waste will be taken, but again, just a way to get rid of electronic waste. So again, that is the 22nd through the 26th, 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Item number two is the yard waste recycling for fall to let the Board be aware that beginning October 6th, at Fire Station Number 4, we will have our yard waste open Monday through Saturday from 8:00 to 6:00 p.m., and Sunday, 12:00 to 5:00 p.m. This will be on our website, it will be on all of our social media, and also in our newsletter. There's some holidays that will be closed, for example, Columbus Day, Veterans Day, and then Thursday through Sunday, Thanksgiving weekend. And then following the Thanksgiving holiday, we return to the regular Monday, Thursday, and Saturday from 8:00 to 6:00. And then January 9th, the yard waste closed for the winter months. So that way, it gives those folks who celebrate the Christmas holiday time to drop off their Christmas trees to the yard waste. And then below are the hours for stallway, but most people are interested in those hours at the old fire station. So we will have that posted everywhere. And then item number three is a resolution for the Plain Township Board of Trustees to authorize payment to the Worsler Brothers Landscaping for August 2014 in an amount not to exceed $2,100 from Fund 01A-26L.
I will so move
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Mr. Alino?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
And then the Administrator's report.
Thank you. That does put us right at 6:15, so we're going to adjourn from this regular meeting to the public hearing for zoning amendment number 557-14. With respect to this public hearing, we're going to ask that if there's anybody who's here to speak in support of the zoning amendment, that you state your name and your address, the fiscal officer for the record. Is there anybody here speaking in support of public hearing for zoning amendment 557-14? Gentlemen in the front row, if you'll just state your name and address first to start.
My name is Brian Ashman, I'm part of Cooper and Associates, 1359 Mark Baden-Morden. Thank you. Whereas I'm going to be presenting some information relative to the actual zone change aspects of the request here, and some of the engineering aspects of the request. Also attending here is one of the members of the partners, Mr. Skip Ray, and he'll follow me with some discussion with aspects to the actual anticipated development characteristics. Currently, the piece of property in question is located at 2766 Mount Pleasant Street. Consists of two independent parcels, both owned by the same individual, and it contains about 18.65 acres. The property is currently zoned for RR Residential Development, which is a 30,000-square-foot lot with 100-foot frontage. We are asking for approval of a rezone to R1 Single Family Residential, which would allow the lots to be a minimum of 15,000 square feet with 80-foot lot width at the building line. I want to bring something up with respect to the actual intended, or the description of the purpose for each of the zones. The zoning code states that the purpose of an RR district is to set aside areas of township which are uniquely suitable for agricultural purposes and/or which are environmentally sensitive, as identified in the township adopted comprehensive meeting master plan, and provide low-density single-family spaces within the rural atmosphere. This is what we are currently zoned, and we don't feel that that is accurate for this piece of property. The R1 zoning is listed as being a purpose established to accommodate single-family residential dwellings in areas that will retain the scale and character of existing residential neighborhoods. This subject, this subject piece of property is certainly not agricultural, it's not been used for agricultural, it has been, or let's say certainly has not been used recently for agricultural. It is fairly, it is basically an open piece of property with a single house on it and some other preferences, but the current owner is wishing to sell this, and there is a developer that is wishing to acquire this piece of property, rezone it to R1, and install some, and then design and install some lots. I'd like to offer for the Board, through the purpose here, some supplemental information that I'd like to be able to bring up. What I've done here is, on the first sheet that I've given to you, I have, I've presented the Plain Township zoning map on the bottom with the Lake Township zoning map on top. As you are well aware, Mount Pleasant is the township's zone line. What I'd like to do is emphasize a couple, certain, couple areas. The piece of property that we are looking at is that, is that green piece that the arrow is pointing at. That section there is the 18.65 acres. As you can see by this map, it is completely surrounded by R1 zoning, both in Plain Township and in Lake Township. The Plain Township R1 zoning is considerably smaller, as I said, 15,000 square feet lot from 30,000. Lake Township to the north, I know they don't really count this decision, but it is looking at the whole general atmosphere of the property surrounding this. And Lake Township, this is zoned R1, and their R1 zoning has a minimum lot size of 12,000 square foot, 80-foot frontage and width. So what I'd like to emphasize is that 30,000 square feet restriction for this 18 acre, which is one property on two different parcels, is, when you look at this, it almost is, it's almost evident that this is almost like a reverse spot zoning. Here we have a piece that is RR, surrounded by R1, and yet we're in an area that is not contiguous to, or, or say, in the outskirts of residential area where it would be beneficial to try to maintain this rural residential 30,000-square-foot lots. And for this purpose, we are classifying this as being the primary hardship, that this piece of property is inaccurately zoned at the current time, in our opinion, and should actually have been zoned R1. We understand that this piece of property has been zoned RR for a considerable length of time, probably since 2001, I have a map, it's shown it as being RR, I'm not sure, can I say RR or R1? It's been RR since 2001 at least. We're not saying that there's anything wrong, but that it was zoned RR, but it's not applicable to the situation that we have at this time. All the lots around us are considerably smaller. They're even smaller than what the R1 requirement requires, mandates of 15,000 square feet. Many of the lots around this piece of property are only 8,000 square feet in size, 8,000 to 10,000 square feet. But we realize that when the zone change occurred, these were probably grandfathered in prior to the most recent zone change. Have no problem with that either. What we are trying to do is create a situation that, that has zoning that is comparable to the existing property. And the 15,000 square feet that is proposed with the R1 zoning is not just comparable, but it is almost 50% to say 75% larger than the existing lots that are out there. And we don't feel that 30,000 square foot would be applicable at all for this piece of property. We, when we were looking at this, we were considering rezoning to an R1A, which would have allowed us to be down to 12,000 square feet of lot, but it was decided that we wanted to create a 15,000 square foot lot with a nice home on it, something as a step-up situation. And Mr. Ray will talk about the home design aspect of this in a few minutes. On the second sheet, what you're going to see, I did attach three sheets there, on the second sheet, it gives you, I, we understand that the zone change is not conditioned upon us providing a layout for lots or anything, but we have already made a submission to Stark County Regional Planning Commission for preliminary plat approval, and the second sheet that you see is that plan. It shows the intention of the development by the developers, and in fact, that we've already applied for the preliminary plat approval indicates that their, their desire is to proceed with this layout. The lots represented are about 15, they're 15,000 square feet, larger, larger, and in performance with township zoning regulations except this. Denny had indicated, he thinks that perhaps a couple lots right down there in the southeast corner, the lot, the lot width that the building setback might have been wrong, and he is correct. So we are actually making an adjustment to that to reduce one lot. And what you will see on the third page indicates the adjusted, the adjusted development with the, a little larger scale so you can see things, and it presents that layout with one less lot, which we will be proceeding with. I'd like to state that Regional Planning Commission did give us conditional approval for the preliminary plat, not that that makes a difference, but it's conditional upon approval by the trustees at the Plain Township accepting the zone change as requested to an R1. I've given this third map for a couple reasons. Anytime residents, certainly residents are always concerned about a zone change in their neighborhood, and the most usual concern has to do with the fact that they're used to seeing open space behind them, and it's going to be developed, they don't like that. Our, certainly, property owner has a right to develop property, and in accordance with zoning. So even if we were not able to get an R1 zone, the owner of the property could develop and put in residential lots of 30,000 square feet. The second reason that most, usually is, one of the large reasons for opposition has to do with the traffic that's generated by development. We are proposing that we're going to have 41 lots on this development, and I'm not saying that it won't generate some additional traffic. We have two points of access into the development. One is from Carlton Street, which is on the west side, and one is from Mount Pleasant, which is deep across from Abigail Street. Stark County Area Transportation Department has done studies on the capability of the existing roads out here. And Mount Pleasant Street, which was included in their study, was listed as being either a classification A or B, depending upon where you were on Mount Pleasant. Both the A and the B designations indicate that the existing conditions are well below the design conditions for the roadway. In other words, the allowable capacity of Mount Pleasant is much larger than what we currently have out there, and therefore, the amount of traffic that would be generated by this development would not impact even that number A or B status that Mount Pleasant is currently giving. The local residential streets like Samuelford or Carlton, which is where we're coming in, those are not included in the SCAS, but those streets also, from my review, it would not have any problem with accepting the additional small amount of traffic that would be generated by this development. Another issue having to do with traffic has to do with the capability of having site distance on major streets. And the proposed entrance at Abigail has been evaluated, and it had, it will meet the ODOT requirements for intersection site distance. So we are not creating a hazardous situation for the roadways that are, for the roadway that is connected to Mount Pleasant Street. That's another issue of concern, often by residents stating that more accidents could occur because of the development. The third primary issue having to do with concerns of development has to do with flooding. More development means more rooftop, more pavement, more impervious area means you're going to have more runoff from your development. On this third sheet, I presented two different colored lines. One is green line, I call it out as the existing drainage basin line. Everything to the east of, if you have Mount Pleasant pointed towards the top, everything to the right, which is to the east of this drainage basin line, flows east and ends up going across residential lots with discharge to the existing street to the west, to the east of this development, which is, I had it on my sheet here, but I don't remember the name, I apologize. Well, whatever it is. On the east side of this plan, there's another roadway, there's a public roadway over there. All this drainage ends up going through some lots, especially, I would say, lots of the Williams parcel and the Nathaniel parcel are severely impacted by the existing drainage conditions. Because the water's going down to the east, it's concentrating, it has to get from, from the existing property over to the public roadway where there's some receiving storm sewers that can accept this drainage. There even was an existing storm drainage easement that was put between the Williams and Nathaniel property that, from our review, my review, there's never been a proper storm sewer system put in there to be able to collect this water and keep it from rushing down and causing flooding on the adjacent neighbors. When the proposed development is done, we have specific design requirements that are mandatory, that we meet, and that we collect, detain, and release that up at a rate that's prior to the discharge rate, existing discharge rate for all storms 2 through 100 here. We have to collect the rainwater, hold it back, we treat it for water quality, we detain it, and then we are planning to release it in a storm sewer that would go in the easement between the Williams parcel and the Nathaniel parcel, down to the existing storm sewer, which is on the street that is just to the east. By doing this, there will be no surface drainage coming off of By doing this, there will be no surface drainage coming off of this development, going across our property line into the neighbors' properties to the east. We'll be collecting it in the area that I've indicated as the blue shaded area with storm discharge where I've indicated that we will have a storm discharge pipe. This provides a substantial upgrade to the drainage concerns of the existing neighborhood and will reduce any flooding that they are currently seeing out there. And, uh, we feel that that is a very good benefit for the actual development of the I would like to just reemphasize that this piece of property, being this little isolated 18 acres up here, surrounded by R1 zoning and lots that are even smaller than R1 zoning, in my opinion, should, and we hope the trustees agree, will be approved for this rezoning. You are aware that Regional Planning Commission looked at this and may have approved the requested zone change. You also are aware that your zoning board has reviewed this and had, we had a meeting and they also approved this for the requested zone change. So I'm asking that you, as the trustees, do likewise and realize that the hardship for this piece of property remaining as an RR is that the developers don't want to go in and put in large lots with infrastructure and then have a situation that these lots can't be marketable because they don't blend, they don't match up with the types of residences, homes that are out there currently. So we, this is a hardship. You can't create lots on 30,000 square feet, blend it in and be able to market these lots. I asked the township trustees approve the zone change and, uh, if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them, or you can let Mr. Ray speak and then we can answer together if you would wish.
Our, our process will dictate that we'll have any individuals that speak in support of it, then we'll hear the arguments against, and then we'll hear any further questions.
That's fine. Thank you.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah. We may all be trusted.
My, my, my.
Go, entrusted.
My biggest, were you looking at retention or detention ponds along this along there?
The, it's going to be a detention. Our thought is it's going to be a detention basin along that entire east side where that blue, that blue area is.
Because Joe and me out here, the only worry I have is that 200 to 200-year rain, we're hitting them. This year we've been hitting far. We have newer lotments there, what, 10 years old that we, Larry, you and I went and visited that, that we thought were put together well with detention ponds, and these people are being flooded. Are we looking very accurately that, are we putting large enough pipes in these? Because I gotta be honest with you, before, in the past, we'd get that 100-year storm maybe, what, every 10 years? But now, honestly, I'm looking to see that we're going to be hitting these quite often. We're dealing with a lot of this right now that are flooded. And we're talking a lot with Joe and I went to, this one, what, this area was only built maybe eight years ago, and they're, they're flooded. So that's my biggest concern. Are we looking at this, the bigger picture, that we've really got to be handling these large storms, because these large storms are then becoming more frequent that hit than we've seen before?
I think that's a very reasonable question to ask, and I'd be glad to give my response. We've not started our engineering on it as, so to speak. We have our intended layout, we've gone through, we're going through the preliminary plat process. When my firm designs detention basins, what we will do is we create a scenario, and this is an ideal situation because we have a storm pipe down on, what's the name of the road to the east?
Woodruff?
Yes. Yes, Woodruff. The, on Woodruff, there's an existing storm sewer system. It has sufficient size and capacity, and it was designed to pick up this drainage that's coming off of this existing property. We're going to be putting in what I expect to be, uh, on my preliminary analysis, 18-inch storm sewer from Woodruff up to our development. At our detention basin, we're going to be putting in a very small outlet structure. Maybe, it'll be designed based upon the hydrology that we have to do for the 2 through 100-year storms. But it might be, it might be an outlet orifice that might be in the range of eight inches or something to that measure. When we design the outlet structure, what we do is we normally get it up, if we have an overflow, if the basin is at this height, we have an overflow area in the, in the basin that allows it to go over the embankment so it doesn't just go over the top anywhere, normally one foot below. What we do then is we create a, our control structure has an overflow set below the spillway, this emergency spillway, usually about six inches below the spillway elevation. And if, if the water gets up to that grade, it circumvents the small orifice that we have, goes over, goes into the 18-inch pipe, which then is transported over to Woodruff. And by doing this, we can, it, it can usually handle storms much in excess of 100, but not until it goes over the overflow. Do you, do you understand what I'm saying? So we, we try to accommodate this. We do have specific design requirements that we must meet, but through the way we design it, we try to get it so it's beyond the limited, or beyond the minimum design standards that we have. That's all I can say now, because we haven't finished the design, certainly.
Oh, I'm sorry. In this development, will there have to be in, in any of these residents' backyards swells that you would be making for this water or?
No. All of the, what we'll be doing is on our property along this east line, we'll be creating an embankment. And that, and then, so it goes up and across and back down. And then all of the stormwater management is to the west of the embankment. The embankment will be against our east property line, not on the neighbors, but on, on the actual development's property. To the west of the embankment will be the detention basin right now.
Makes sense. My last question, because Joe and I have noticed that some of these developers, and I'm talking eight-year, homes of eight years old, where they develop these swells or whatever plan for the water, they let the residents make their own, uh, put tight their own trees, put their own fences up, and we may end up problems that we couldn't even get near these people's property now with water problems. That's, that's, I'm just asking, will you, will you guys keep a tight rein on, on these homes, why not, that residents aren't going to be interfering with this flood?
We will be creating it. Through the plating process, we can put restrictions as to what the, what the lots that have their backyards going into the detention basin, we can put restrictions as to what are permitted and what is permitted and what is not. Personally, I won't be out there enforcing those restrictions, but we will incorporate restrictions that will say they're not going to have fencing that prevents access in to be able to maintain these detention basins and to be able to go into where the control structure is and make sure that it is clean without. There will be some sort of, uh, an association created that is responsible for the maintenance of this basin and the outlet control structure. Okay? So we create that as part of the maintenance responsibilities of either the residents that are there or the homeowners association for the whole 41 lots for maintenance purposes. Not mowing, but making certain that we don't have debris clogging up the outlet control structure or anything to that nature.
Thank you, Mr. Ray.
As far as maintenance agreements with the homeowners association, what happens if the association disbands or the association is not active?
That can be a problem.
The reason why I ask is because of the drainage easement I had in my, I don't know, home that came to Crete. I mean, when it sold it in, then it was overflowing, became property owners adjacent to its responsibility.
Let me say two things. Um, as with regards to homeowners associations, we personally have seen over and over again, those restrictions are only as good as the association becomes. And some, they sit there and they don't do anything about it, and some are on it and they take care of it. So with regard to that issue, we've seen it go both ways. Secondarily, I'll have to keep my answers brief and very legal because I just bought one of the lots that is going right next to. So, so I live in, you look on your map there by the, the Price Lot, which is right on the corner of Sandford and Carlton. I had no idea this was on the agenda for tonight. And, uh, so if you have legal questions specific that I'm happy to answer them, but anything else, I'll have to keep my mouth shut.
We, when the plat is created, there is, the, the area of the detention basin will be put in an easement, a public easement, which gives the right to, say, the township to be able to go in and do something, I, depending upon how the language is, but it also gives the county the right to go in and be able to go in and do the, uh, if, usually what occurs in a detention basin area is people go in illegally, dump materials, dirt, whatever, and you lose your volume. Or people go, or you get debris that falls into the basin and it goes down and plugs up the structure. And, uh, but by having the easements in there, there is the capability that this can be done by a public agency also. But I understand that there becomes then the situation as to who pays for that public agency to do it. I'm certain that there's legal, uh, legal criteria that's been established by Nogent County or something, but I'm not exactly certain how it's written though.
Go ahead, Joe. I, you can answer.
I just, I just from past experience and working with RTC on these detention and retention ponds, that they are all being set as homeowners association's responsibility. But this question has been asked for the last 15 years in our board of, what happens when that homeowners association, either goes defunct or nobody's taking care of it? It will come back on the township eventually at some point. It will have to take care of that.
Again, because the county doesn't.
Because it won't be on the county, because it's on Stark County, no, it's on the township for a place, more likely, most of them won't be on township.
All right. As far as judicial.
They're needed though. Don't get me wrong, all these retention, detention ponds are needed.
This time, appreciate your comments, Mr. Ash, and then the gentleman. Mr. Ray McRae. Since you state your name and your address, for the record, just speak to any new additional details that you may have that haven't already been touched upon.
Hi, my name is Skip Ray. I live at 8230 Let's Haven, uh, Jackson Township. And I'm, uh, one of the developers, SRS group. And, uh, I've got a little thing here to give you about myself and the group. We've been developing basically the last 40 years of Jackson Township, so done lots and lots of lots. We've been down all these roads. I've heard retention basins runoffs for 40 years, so, uh, we've really, really tried to be, uh, township-friendly, uh, homeowner-friendly, the whole thing. I actually, we've got, uh, this allotment, we're trying to model after allotment, we just finished up Scottsberry Hills, it's on Amherst Road, Jackson Township. Uh, we have, uh, where the current parade is, uh, even though I didn't go to the parade, we developed it. We did all the development all up through there. And we've got, uh, two, two basic retention basins in there. And, uh, both of them are on homeowners' existing property. And I could take any type of you guys would like to go look at, I'd take it, show you what we've done there. Those are detention ponds. Now, we've done some that are retention ponds, and they hold water. We've got, you see there, we've got Mudbrook, Thunderdust Estates, one of our lotments. And if you go down Mudbrook, you'll see a pond there. And that's a retention pond. And, uh, Riley Hills, same thing, we have a huge retention pond. Now, there's a problem with retention ponds is after they grow up, they get real unsightly and no one wants to take care of them. Where the detention ponds, we're finding, made part of their yard, it's, that section is yours, you mow it, and, and most people have done that, and they look nice. Now, temporarily, they're going to get water out. But for the most part, they drain back out. We've never, I could show you Scottberry, we had probably 100 houses in there. And we've never had a problem with, uh, anybody's calling me saying, we've, we've, and we've never, uh, started the homeowners association, but we're done. And the reason for that is we take care of everything. Now, another allotment you'll see there is Aberdeen. Aberdeen, we've got 370 houses in there, and it's a huge, huge area. And we've got same thing, we've got detention areas, but yet it's, uh, the difference there is that's part of the PUD, and it's got a pantheon of development and the homeowners take care of it. And, but we took care of everything until we're basically finishing it right now. Now, the only thing I'd like to give you, one of the reasons we went with, uh, pass it around. We went with bigger lots than what we thought, we thought we probably could have got the R1As. But what we wanted to do was all little bit bigger houses, I want to do all three-car garages. You can see almost everything I'm passing around. And we've been down all those roads with the smaller houses and the red barns in the backyard and the da-da-da-da-da. So what we're trying to get is so that you have places for your cars, your mowers, et cetera. And as you see there, those are all current houses that we've been building the last 10 years, and this is what I plan on building there. We find that people, people will want something like that. We've done, like I said, we've done really well with that style, that type, a lot of first-floor masters, ranches, we still have some two-stories, but more of the, the current style of houses that are out there.
Mr. Ray, what, what's the estimated, fresh, fresh range on each?
House a lot?
Yeah.
300, 300 and a quarter, you know, but we're probably going to try to say 275, 280, something like that to get started. But you, you, what we find is that people, the people we're selling mostly to all want the upgrades. I mean, everyone wants grand for some reason. They want grand countertops, they want this, they want that. So those are the people that are coming to us who want new houses. And, you know, we're trying to, it's a, it's a wonderful area. Years ago, I, I built some houses in Bobolink, and, you know, those are nice areas, but the houses are 20, 30 years old. And so we're offering a, going to be offering a new house. We have 41 lots and that's it. There's no more, no more else, no, no other place to go right there, and we can't go any larger than that. So this is what we're proposing. We'd like to get approval and, any questions?
Well, I'll be honest with you, I've, I've never met you, but I know you. Houses was my hobby.
All right.
And I could say comfortably that Skip Ray, who was a very reputable name, I remember in the past, um, know you to be, been through your homes, you've created homes. I mean, if there's anyone here in this allotment that was concerned, I mean, again, this is not something that's planned, I don't know you, I'm just saying that you have a good reputation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ray.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Is there, is there anybody else within the crowd here that wishes to speak in support of zoning amendment 557-14? Okay, that'll now take us to anybody that's here to speak in opposition of zoning amendment Is there anybody that wishes to address the board? Anyone to speak in opposition? Any questions or comments by fellow board, board members on this?
I was just, I had to, this, you know, many people know this board is very cautious when it comes to something changes. We look at these very seriously, um, to make sure many of the possible issues can be addressed going forward, as you can, not having a crystal ball through all these things that are going to happen that nobody foresaw. But an area that this has been proposed in, um, how, uh, similar to the situation that we faced on Martindale Road, where all this surrounding property owners were zoned for multi-family except for the parcel that was in question, this is a reverse of that, where everything around it right now is on his own family. In my opinion, restricts the landlord from being able to utilize the property the same way as being utilized around it. I think it's an appropriate plan, even though they don't require to show it to us, but, um, I think it would be best interest of the property if it was changed, is my personal opinion.
Questions slash comments?
If you can go to the department's chief, from a safety services aspect, anything here that you would, you know, denote to this book, to this board regarding what's been discussed?
Obviously the plan, but, uh, obviously accessibility with the street, would you run a standard? Is it a cul-de-sac or not?
There's one inside.
We talked about this in here. Is that the one we talked about?
Yeah.
So, yeah, I have, remember that we did look at it. So, yeah, I have, we did look at it, interviewed it, and I discussed it with Danny regarding the cul-de-sac and the radius of that cul-de-sac, so that was our concern, and we talked about that, we're aware of that.
I think likewise, as Mr. Geovasis has noted for the record, reverse spot zoning, the fact is, as areas develop over time, and now this is the outlier up there, so we are, we would be essentially prohibiting or restricting comparable use to the current property owner for development purposes, and it's not the role of government to pick who's the winners and losers. And this, if the plan meets the development criteria, that's imperative. I do want to be on record, is I had an individual that had called, expressed a concern about the traffic, you know, on Mount Pleasant, to which, actually, you've already spoken to that, Mr. Ashman, traffic count and so forth through there. So I don't necessarily echo that, that same concern based upon the metrics. Sometimes perception doesn't measure what the reality is, and we see that in a lot of situations, from, you know, when we get speed, speed buggy requests, so much going fifty through here all the time, and we find out, there may be one, but everybody's had her under the speed limit. The fact that this does butt up against the existing model link, and you've got St. James right, right across the road, I think you've got comparable housing as compared to what's proposed here. And furthermore, I know historically, we've always talked about zoning as a step down with the buffers, I know Lou, you've always hit on that, quite frankly, the fact that you went to the fifteen thousand, didn't push it all the way to twelve thousand. I appreciate, I appreciate that. I don't have anything further to note. Do I hear my fellow trustees have any questions or comments?
Just for the record, so everybody knows, I don't think you can design a storm sword that was going to handle the rain, some of the rains that we got this year. So that's just the stark reality, it's going to be difficult to do, but I know the type of system I have myself now. It fills up and it goes right down, it works that way. And I think that may address my concerns.
Okay. I'm going to make a motion, whereas a public hearing was held on September ninth, two thousand and fourteen by the Plain Township Board of Trustees to consider amendment number five fifty-seven to the Plain Township zoning resolution, and whereas such hearing was properly and timely held pursuant to Ohio Revised Code five one nine dot one two, whereas the Plain Township Board of Trustees has duly considered the nature of the amendment and the reasons therefore, the recommendation of the Plain Township Zoning Commission, the Stark County Regional Planning Commission, and the information provided by any and all other interested persons, now therefore be hereby resolved by the Plain Township Board of Trustees, Stark County, Ohio, to adopt the recommendation of the Plain Township Zoning Commission for approval.
Second.
Discussion, roll call. Mr. Leena?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
And Mr. Hawes? Yes. That motion carries. That will conclude our public hearing on number five fifty-seven dot one-four at exactly six fifty-three P M. We will now go back to our regular meeting of the Plain Township Board of Trustees at six fifty-four P M. We will pick up specifically fire department, and I'm going to turn that over to Chief Snyder.
Fire number one is the monthly report.
Thank you, thank you. Just give me a second.
Just, just the fact that it was another busy month, you know, we had pushing over four hundred calls a month, and that's three months in a row, four hundred calls, and this past week's been a pretty difficult call, we've certainly called it bad, so. But overall, you know, we're busy, we continue to be busy, and stats showed it too because of the amount of calls that, you know, I know June was up a little more than the other, that's too much because of, because of the storms and the rain, and the effect that there's going to be had during the month of June, but July and August, we didn't have that, but we still showed over four hundred calls for the month.
Knowing the, knowing the call law, knowing the call law, you can abide with some of the personnel restraints we've been dealing with, let the guys know, thanks for the continued hard work, because it's transparent to the public and the support that they give our safety services, both fire events as well as share. Sure, so we need to point that out, the response line, that's incredible, four hundred, you know, we're four hundred responses, and that happened in four minutes and ten seconds. That's incredible.
Okay.
That concludes the fire department, it's going to take us to the road department, and I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Iasino.
President, item number one is the monthly report for August. See a lot of drainage for fifty-two related work orders in August.
Joe, just a point, point of clarification on this, fifty-two, were those predominantly in areas that we've experienced flooding issues from back in May, or, you know, was it sort of dispersed?
It's started on since June, it's a storm in June. Some of them were due that we never had before till that storm in June, others are ongoing that we're trying to upgrade as, as we can. We also were able to do a very large project with Stark County Engineers on Beverly Avenue just south of Diamond Street, that runs, ditch runs between Diamond and Market Avenue. Did a co-product, project together. The county did all the machine work and digging, and we did the home, and it worked out well, and our neighbors are very, very happy with it.
And also, a monthly report for you guys.
Item number two, Scott, I don't want to hear this, sorry. It's a letter from Plain Township Local Schools to continue the, for the road department to salt the school property located within Plain Township. It is understood the schools will pay the township for the cost of the work, it is also understood Plain Township Road Department will form a service when and if they can, depending upon the need, weather need, and the need to be determined by the road department. This has gone on for many years, every year we have to adjust the cost, the cost of salt labor, which we'll get back to.
This is just a letter?
Yes, we always, the board's always had them write us a letter requesting it every year. That's all we got, thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Star's just quick point on this, paving, we pretty well wrapped up on the paving, or where are we at as a percentage of what we've got?
Of course, we've got Snyder Redden for school, but they are working on Diamond Road this week, and none of the allotment streets have died yet, and I've given several phone calls to the contractor, and they, you know, same old thing, we're behind, we're behind. But I did remind them we have an October first deadline in our contract. So it's never happened that we've been this late, been throughout plenty of time, so we will continue to push them, and we're here to finish all the allotment streets that will be left after that.
Not too far away.
Yeah, that's what I keep telling them.
From a risk mitigation aspect, I think trustee Leo brought it up here, I mean, if we, if we got close to that point, it potentially looks like they may not be able to deliver on full completion, what is our alter, what is our alternative to?
I don't think it'll be a, they might not be able to complete it by that October first, but as long as the weather stays above forty-five degrees, we'll be fine. What they'll do is they'll try to tell us it was because of weather, and it's always, we'll have to go back and trace those days when it did rain, you know, to see why they could be here, but that's usually what the contractors will try to fall back on. Hopefully, this doesn't even happen that we get this done.
The fact is, is they committed to date, they know full well, that they can forecast in a percentage of the days.
We're doing eight miles total this year, and we got, um, three quarters done on Snyder, and it'll be half, it'll be fifty percent after Diamond's done, but it's not.
What worries me is that, are they going to do a rush job when they say?
Well, never again, we are on top of that, we have something with that.
Quality work.
Yeah.
Because it's getting close to the element of breath.
The same contractor that ground the streets out, right?
Yes, same contractor, he does the grinding and the paving, so.
Thanks, Joe. That'll wrap up the road department, it continues to the zoning department, I'm going to turn that over to Mr. Paul.
Thank you, gentlemen, item number one is the monthly report for monthly bloggers. Once again, like everybody else, summer's a pretty busy time for us also. Thank you, item number two, we have two nuisance appointments this evening, one at thirty-eight Carl Roosevelt Avenue, Worth East, and one at fourteen eleven thirtieth Street, Worth East.
I will so move on zoning two A and B. Discussion, roll call. Mr. Leena?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
And Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Thank you, and item number three, we have side lot applications for four vacant lots, one on Taff, one on Werthee, two on Harmon. Actually, the two that are on Harmon are the same applicant, who is applying for both of those lots. Three of these, four were part of the moving high forward demolition program, and the fourth was not, the one on Taff was not Harmon program.
There's no known objections by the issue?
No, once, once again, going through, you know, the application process goes into regional planning commission, who's, who's going to bring this, they review it, I, I reviewed it also, and no objections to these, we'll go away and go to someone else's hands.
I'm going to move on zoning three, three A and D. Discussion, roll call. Mr. Leena?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen, that concludes zoning for this evening.
Okay, that's going to take us to our parks department, Mr. Steinberg.
Gentlemen, item number one is the monthly report. Item number two, just to recap our event last Saturday, our first ever bark of bluzo to help raise funds for the dog park and provide opportunities for, for pets and their owners to come out and enjoy the facilities, and so we have, it was very successful, it was actually a rain date from July nineteenth, and it worked out well, right up until about twelve thirty-five. Luckily, we were only up until one, so a nice day, raised some nice funds for the dog park, and all vendors were more than pleased, have already asked to come back for a year or two, so we're in good shape moving forward.
I see that. It was a real well-executed event, I don't have the opportunity to stop over and partake.
Thanks, we were, we were pretty, pretty pleased with it, and it was fun to see all sorts of pups in there, and their human friends out enjoying it. Item number three, just want to remind folks about the supper market, our first one was last night. We are tweaking the timeframe just slightly, we're going to go four thirty to seven thirty the next three Monday evenings at Schneider Community Park, the food trucks of the Voca Logo Barito Factory, the orange truck, and the dome at that. Menus will vary, especially with the orange truck, and it was a nice night, we see it growing in momentum, and anybody who attended, I think, enjoyed the food and the atmosphere. And finally, just an update and a reminder to all, this Friday, September the twelfth, we will be partaking in the United Way Day of Caring. Myself and the full timers will be over at Pathway Caring for Children, doing some renovations as a part of the United Way project, and we're excited to be a part of it this year.
Thank you, Mr. Steinberg. That's going to conclude the parks, it's going to take us to our law director, Mr. Woods.
Thank you, Mr. Hawes. Two items on the agenda this evening, the first is the George Halas Drive Annexation. This is the continuation of what was previously filed, and it includes an additional point nine six seven acres, and talking at least a little bit, this appears to be probably the highest maintenance portion of the annexation, so I think this is a good thing. You probably do not want to oppose it, it's that brick area that I think is going to be taken care of by someone else other than us, which is a good thing. So that's what this is here. For your review, if you wanted to, in, in some circumstances, obviously, we've raised objections with the commissioners, if we don't do that, we have twenty-five days from one of us filed, if we don't do that, then it'll just go through as an expedited type two.
Just for the sake of the record, I mean, the prior, the prior annexation stuff, you know, we talked through it, and we thought that they cleaned it all up, which currently it must not have, so this is really the final piece that will.
Yes, this is it, this is, this brings it all the way, even if I speak to Joe, I'll jump his butt, but this brings it all the way out to full road.
To full road, it was the final three hundred, it was a thing, still remaining in the township for maintenance.
Eric, did you, did you get the letter from September eighth? The copy of the letter?
No, what is?
We got a letter in there withdrawing from the Halas.
Really? Can we tell them we'd like them to file it again?
That's what I thought was on the, the agenda when it's.
No, I've got that petition, I didn't get that letter.
This just came in today.
Okay, that makes sense if it's dated September eighth. So they're withdrawing, so we'd like to ask the city of Canton to refile the George Halas Drive Annexation so that we can get rid of that brick part up to full. I have no idea, like, it's first I've heard of it.
The letter just says that the city of Canton officially withdrew George Halas Drive Annexation request from the commissioners, and it's submitted as an expedited type two annexation, it was filed on August twenty-eighth. If you have any questions, you want to say as soon as.
It could very well have to do with that, basically, you're right, it could have to do with the need that they want to talk to us first before they file it, so they don't ruffle feathers, although on this one, I'm not sure feathers would be ruffled.
This area is not included in the media area.
Yeah, they still wanted to be your neighbors, maybe, either that, or sometimes there's a technical defect, so they withdrawn them on that basis, but certainly we'll touch base with them and figure out what's going on.
Figure it out what the, what's going on.
I'll call Sam tomorrow.
Yeah, so we need to believe this is today, will today?
If it's, yeah, if it's been withdrawn, there's really nothing to even do, just take it off the agenda. Yeah. Thank you. And then, let's look, number two is, we're looking at leasing some space that we don't use at fire station four?
The old first.
The old fire station, what do they call that, just the old fire station? Stark County Deputies Association wants to meet there and, and do some stuff out of that facility, so I put together a lease, we figured some expenses, we put a monthly amount in there, two hundred bucks a month, twenty-four hundred bucks a year, some insurance provisions, things like that, pretty standard lease I put together for you. The resolution is just to agree to enter into that so that they can utilize that space under leasing.
I will so move on that.
Second.
Discussion, I think for the record, we need to reflect it, we've taken a look at a number of different options for this space, from trying to convert it to another community room, community room based upon budgetary costs, that, that's prohibitive, the fact that as well this agreement still gives us use of the rest of the facility and the bays, which essentially is what our parks and our road, our road needs, it does not impair in any way fires' ability to train over there at the training facility, nor does it impair our yard, our yard waste drop off, so all those are the critical function, and the fact that otherwise our, our, we would have straight expense in just keeping it clean. the fact that otherwise, our, our, we would have straight expense in just keeping it clean, clean, so it doesn't, doesn't deteriorate, which our public constituents would fully expect, so, the fact that we're covering the cost and the insurance is gonna be covered by the Deputies Association for, for their use of that space, um, I know, just given the fact of the good part, partnership we've had through the sheriff, through the sheriff's department and so forth, granted, this is a separate entity, a lot of the same representatives that are working in what they are, I mean, I think this is a good functional use for, for that space. Anything else, fellow trustees? Roll call.
Uh, Mr. J. Basis?
Second.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
And Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Okay, that's gonna wrap up the law director, it's gonna take us to communications, I'm gonna turn that over to Mrs. Campbell.
Thank you, item number one, Sheriff Meyer is sharing with the board as it relates to one of our former dispatchers, Joe Scott, uh, Sheriff Meyer wrote Joe a letter that reads, Dear Joe, I have received your letter of retirement effective October first, two thousand and fourteen, and I wanna personally thank you for your service to the Stark County Sheriff's Office and many years of dedicated service to Plain Township and the citizens of Stark County, I wish you well in your retirement, and both health and happiness in the future's best wishes, George Myers, Stark County Sheriff.
With respect to that, given the number of years in which we had our fire dispatch located here, Thompson Hall, the years of service given, I mean, is there something we, we intend, we intend to do, recognizing his, his years of service, whether it's, um, from the board, or, you know, the farewell?
He had probably twenty years as a volunteer fire fighter, and then also in this.
Once we get closer to that, I mean, whether it's a card or some, you know, something from the board.
That's great, and item number two belongs to Mr. Isino.
Well, actually, it's a township-wide item, and I received an email from Diane and Jerry Rodak, um, she writes, if I would take that township and install a deer crossing sign on our side street, Morellos, near Eastern Street, the traffic using the street is non-stop speeding, the sign would be threefold, hopefully, it will slow down the cars, which would assist in helping no accidents involving the deer mama and two babies, not, not to mention the extent of damage related charges incurred by speeding and driving vehicles, additionally to walkers, children at play, and bike riders, many times I stand in the street to alert, alert drivers to slow down, well, that a sign will benefit us all. Also, what is the zoning in Plain Township regarding the mobile home existing on an extra lot, I'd appreciate your response to both. This area is between Grove and Easton, south of Eastern Street, it's one block long, um, I checked our records, never had a deer problem there yet, I replied to Earl, it's for a speeding, it is generalized at twenty-five mile per hour, it's stop signs on both ends, so, I don't know, we're talking board, we'd like us to use a group, I guess, either Bill and the Sheriff's Office, or me with a deer crossing signs, or.
I travel that.
Then we're zoning out.
I travel that special road every day, going home and work, and close proximity to spouse sign from Easton to Grove is less than two hundred yards, it's literally, if I floored my car, I, it would be difficult, I probably could, but, I mean, it would be difficult to get up to a speeding lane, she's talking about, in that small section there, and like I said, I've been traveling through here for years, and I've never seen a deer.
I, I mean, that is a contentious area right now, we all know that, um, I've never seen deer in an area, there's not even woods on either side of the road.
There are some on the other side of Easton, but I've never seen, like, anything on the south side.
I address. We've got traffic control, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Hawes.
Oh, my, and I, I address the issue regarding law laws.
You have, yes, I, I mean, we've done everything, I cracked everyone in the last bag, and track, track control outside of, our, our other options are what, to set, set a speed wagon over there, show, show, show speed, and then provide that report to the sheriff's office, as well as a copy to the residents, should, should something substantiate, obviously, we could request at that point additional control during target times, I think we can speak to that for the sake of the resident, but outside of that, are we missing, are we missing anything here for viable options?
No, I think, take a look at the speed trailer and see.
Yeah, I have a request for the rest of this week, from the Sheriff's Office, and then this week, we can get that.
Well, respond, respond on behalf of the board, just letting know from a, we can get the speed trailer out there, but future date to be, to be determined, obviously, we've got some other areas that are already on the, on the books to have it, that are priority.
Deer crossing signs.
I would just simply state that the stop signs, the close proximity to the two stop signs should adequately address.
I agree.
And the traffic it drives through there, um, Morellos, all lives there, often Morellos and Grove and Dowell and some of those side streets, so it's.
Okay, how many numbers more?
First, I have something to follow up, just let, just let us know.
All right.
So that wraps up communications, that is gonna take us to the portion of the meeting, public speaks, where if you wish to address the board trustees, we ask that you state your name and address for the record, public speaks does carry a three-minute limit per, per speaker, so I will, will have that adhered to, is there anybody that wishes to address the board, gentlemen in the front row, if you'll state your name and your address for the record, please?
My name is Bob Oates, I live at twenty-two oh one fifty-fourth Street, northeast, just east of Lyndford Avenue, I'm here to talk about drainage and flooding, uh, I'd like to start out by saying, I am not talking about the flash flood of June the sixteenth, I understand that was a, probably a once-in-a-lifetime one, but as Mr. Lino said earlier tonight, severe floods are getting more common, since that flash flood of June the sixteenth, there have been three instances where we have gotten two inches of rain, one more, in a very short period. I'd like to show the board some photographs from the storm, the first, you can see what we're dealing with, there are eight homes affected by that flood.
Turn my mic off.
There's a total of eight homes affected by that flooding, and the problem is, the drainage on Fifty-Fifth Street is inadequate to prevent any water from coming down there. I'd like to give you all, Mr. Isino, the sketch, and, and, for the trustees, showing the drains we have there, the drains that are on Fifty-Fifth Street, I walked over two days ago and looked at them, uh, catch basin between, uh, twenty-one thirty and twenty-two hundred was installed about two years ago, it's filled with debris, it supposedly goes under the road and drains into a catch basin on the north side, and I don't know where it goes from there, Mr. Isino, knows.
Yes, it, it, it goes west to the township, city, uh, boundary, then it goes south down a, city maintained, that sort of.
There's also a catch basin between twenty-two ten and twenty-two eighteen, that is very shallow, I'm gonna say not much more than a foot, it's filled with debris, and it looks like a smaller than normal pipe leading out there, so that's very ineffective, the direction you see of the floodwaters coming between twenty-two ten and twenty-two eighteen, Fifty-Fifth, that is relatively new, we used to, for the forty-one years I've lived there, it was quite common between twenty-one thirty and twenty-two hundred to have water coming down there, this other is relatively new, and it just compounds our problem, you can see from those photographs how it's coming, it washes mulch, leaves a mess, washed down our garden three times, well, four times, kind of the flash flood, but I'm not kidding now, and so I'm here asking if something more can't be done on Fifty-Fifth Street to prevent some of that water from coming down south between Fifty-Fifth and Fifty-Fourth.
Joe, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that area naturally is a bowl area, so the water can travel, it's well.
I have, I have elevations here, um, Colette Hill, which is a block, a little over a block east of Mr. Oates's, the area Mr. Oates talked about, is, uh, forty-three feet higher than Mr. Oates's property, um, backyards, I know some of this water's street water, I'm not, not saying it's not, a lot of that water you're getting, Mr. Oates, we know, we've been through this, we've done some work on your property, it's backyard water from your neighbors, their downspouts from their roofs, running through the backyard, getting to your property.
The day goes further.
We thought, we, we thought we pretty much solved your problem a couple years ago, um, we had a small problem recently on Fifty-Fourth Street, west of you, in the city boundary lines, and we've worked with the city, and we finally got that repaired, uh, there was two big sinkholes from the pipe collapsing down there, I don't know if you were aware of that?
Yes, I was.
I grew it down there, um, I worked with the city, and I grew it though diligently, we got that all repaired, um, I, I am meeting with your neighbor behind you, Mr. Redalia, tomorrow morning, on his issues.
Mr. Hoos.
I think it's Redalia, I'm not sure how you say it, it was.
The gentleman with the swimming pole?
Yes, on his issue, I'm meeting with him in the morning, at eight o'clock, um, without enlarging the, the system south of you, I don't know what can be done, to be honest with you.
Can you not?
We could clean out the basins, that's not a problem, I wasn't aware that they needed to clean out, that'll get done tomorrow, um, if that is true.
Wouldn't it be possible to put a couple more basins and run it more across the street, under the street, like you did with that one?
Sure, doesn't, when that's still not all the water, all intended the same drainage?
Right, it's just, the problem is the pipe on the north side is not probably gonna handle it any faster, so they're gonna back up anyhow at some point, all right, Mr. Lino and I have spent several hours sitting out there in rainstorms over the past four or five years, spot, spotting them where they, where the water is coming across the road at, from Aspen Valley, which is part of this watershed, is very large, this is one of the biggest watersheds in Allister County, from there, all the way west of Market Avenue, all the way north of, um, Easton, all this water comes down to that area, down to where the city just did that project that caused us some, we'll get into that later, but there is a large watershed, this is why we've tried to work with the W C to get a grant to start the lower end of this project, to put in a larger pipe in, so we could come north with it, take care of your problem, take care of your, all your neighbors' problems, until I can get that grant, or this court can get that grant, to start that project.
It sounds like you're talking years down the line.
Well, if, if, we'll, we'll know before the end of this year whether we get it, um, for this year, and we can continue to press to get it.
Did I just understand that that grant is only gonna cover the southern part from Forty-Fifth to Forty-Ninth?
Yes, because we have to start at the lowest end, which, this goes down to Nims, you know, Nims, Stone Creek, we have to start there, and we were only able to, to match so much funds at this time for this part of the project, once that gets done, we can reapply again, once we can match some funds to do the northern part of the project.
As of right now, the southern portion is not even been granted yet, so that, that is just a hope at this point.
Correct.
I haven't given you very much.
I will look at all this again, I will, I've been out there several times, you know that I have been out there, I have work orders here with me, at least a dozen of them for that area, for the new catch basins, we added on Fifty-Fifth over the last four or five years for a project we did on your street, um, and we'll come out, I'll be out there tomorrow, I'll be out there at eight o'clock tomorrow morning, talking to your neighbors, so we will look at all over again, if there's something we can add that would help, I just don't wanna add catch basins that aren't gonna help, if it's not gonna help, you know, if we can find something, we will do it.
Joe, for sake of clarity and understanding, has any of this property in the past five, ten, fifteen years ever had a period where there was open ditches that have since been piped and covered, which would slow the natural flow or throttle, throttle that water back and thus create the swell of the surface area?
Um, no, not that I'm aware of, I, uh, at one point, Mr. Oates had a, he's, I wasn't really an easement, it was a, kind of a drainage way alongside of his, west side of his house, went and went in and dug a ditch there, and it worked for a while, um, we now have a pipe there, and a swell.
Who, who?
I was talking to Mr. Oates's son earlier this summer, and he said you were happy with it, until that big storm hit, I guess.
Well, I'm not blaming you for that big swell.
No, I know.
But that ditch was eighteen inches deep, forty-eight inches wide, that's an area of six square feet, a twelve-inch pipe in there now has an area of about eight tenths of a square foot.
That's why we added the swell on top of there.
Well, the swell has helped, but, again, unless we keep some of it.
I could put a sixty-inch pipe there, but it's not gonna get out of the pipe below, it's smaller, I can't.
Well, I understand that.
That's why the twelve-inch had to go in there.
I'm just trying to see whatever you can do to keep some of it from coming down that hole from Fifty-Fifth, there's two, two catch basins on the south side of Fifty-Fifth, that's it.
Are you part of this letter?
That's my wife's handiwork.
No.
You've met her?
Yeah. We, I look at this letter, I mean, it bothers me, because Joe and I have worked our butts off in your property, covering your ditch, covering that swell, putting a pipe in there for you, putting in catch basins, sitting at night with umbrellas, and then that letter, we've made an honest effort here, Joe, help me out here, but we spent some quality time fixing this property, we, when I spoke to you last, you were happy, your wife was happy, you weren't getting the water problems, and all of a sudden, now we get a letter like that, it bothers me, because you're acting like we have an excuse for not doing our job, and I spent, how much time we spent over there with this project? And, these are just crazy rains, and it's, you know, these flooding.
I agree, but we've had three of them this year.
Recent year sixteen.
I mean, what if we would let that catch basin open, and I'll put that pipe in, we had that water laying there, I mean, we should have let that ditch open there, I don't know, we covered that ditch because they wanted to come, we spent quality time there, hours, hours, Joe and I, the umbrellas, watching this rain, and thought that we had a happy solution, but these rains have been crazy.
Well, I agree, I agree with you, they've been worse here than mine.
But, you know, just that letter bothers me, I have to be honest with you.
We, we have to understand that this system, the main system was probably put in, at least, would you, I always go out if you think there's.
I lived there forty-one years.
Okay, it wasn't built for the storms we're getting now, it was built probably for a ten-year event at that time, that was all that was mandatory to be built, you know, for a ten-year event, now we're getting hundred-year events twice a year, and maybe a two-hundred-year event that they think that one on June sixteenth was, so, we're under, we understand that a lot of our major systems aren't adequate to meet these storms, but it's also a budgetary problem, we don't have five million dollars to go down Lyndford and put that new sponsor out of township without getting grant money, and that's probably what it'll take, from Forty-Fifth Street to Fifty-Fifth Street, will probably take about five million dollars.
When you do that, that solves a problem from 54th to 45th. People wouldn't do anything from 55th down to 56th.
Well, we're going to include part of 55th heading east on that second phase. That's already been talked about with our empty there.
All right, whatever you can do.
We are trying, believe me, sir, we are trying, sir.
You want, you want your.
You can have that if you like. Anybody wants it?
Joe, your view?
Sure, I'll take it.
We, we do appreciate the time.
The time, yes.
As Joe alluded to, he will, he will follow up tomorrow if this indicated. Do we have anybody else that's in the pub, in the crowd that wishes to address the board of trustees with any specific township business matters? If so, I ask that you state your name and your address for the record. Sir, go ahead.
My name is Bill. We were 1900 B, Noble Avenue Northwest, PM line. And the reason I am here as usual is we understand that the magistrate has finally ended down the decision by helping clean up the property next door to us. What we're just urging is that we continue to try to get the rest of it cleaned up. It has a horrible hardship on our, on our business. We have people telling us they're going to cancel because of the mess next door, they're not going to look because of the mess next door. It's just gotten so proud of it. So we respectfully request you that we stay on that and get it cleaned up. That's all I can say at this time.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to address this board with any township-specific business? Okay, that's going to conclude public speaks.
Mr. Oats, I do see Mr. and Mrs. Ward in the audience, and I did just want to let them know that I have some information in regards to the littering in the neighborhood. Aside from Mr. Falk and I sending a letter to the businesses that we talked about, I am working with the Stark County Sheriff, George Meyer, and he is going to work with the, the inmates. And I know that you may have seen them, you know, on various parts of highways cleaning up litter. And when they're out there, they, he will with his staff and have them come over on that area of Endrow and do some cleanup also. So we have worked on that. And Denny, I don't know if he has talked to you, he could talk to you after the meeting. He has some information about the vacation, vacating Endrow. So make sure you see Mr. Falk afterwards. He's got some information to give you about that also.
Like, thank you very much.
Our pleasure.
Go back just one last, is there somebody that wishes to address the board for the sake of public speaks? Okay, that will close out our public speaks. That is going to take us to Concerns of Trustees, and I believe, Mr. Gevasis, you had an update regarding meeting you were at during our last board meeting representing this township on drainage, flooding, Ziverditch, so.
Yes, myself and Iowa Superintendent Mr. Isino, we attended a meeting at the North County Civic Center in regard to the Ziverditch and the first round of money that was awarded in, at that meeting, it wasn't disclosed at that time which property owners were going to be included in the first phase. They're going to, they're anticipating awarding that to 10 property owners. They, they ranked the properties that were included in that initial phase. I think there was 67 applicants that wished to have their properties bought out along the Ziverditch. There was only one that was included in the township, that's Gaslight Circle.
Arboretum?
Arboretum Circle, I apologize. There's going to be a second phase. Out of the first 10 that are picked, they're going to do their appraisals and make offers to those property owners. If any of those property owners decide to pull out, they would go to the 11th, 12th, 13th, based on an internal ranking. I, we don't have to solve that block, we were there during the meeting. There's going to be a second phase applying for it. We need to make sure that we get in contact with properties that are in the township outside of the one that was already included to make sure that when that second phase does go forward, those properties are included. There was a lot of discussion and desire, you know, the work will be closer with the township in this next round, purging their fabulous job during the, just at this point, we're not going to have a whole lot of headway on any of the issues related with, you know, township properties outside of the one on Arboretum Circle. That pretty much summed it all up and then we were told that we would be notified in the next meeting, the next go-along. How about Joe, I think.
I think they may have received $1.5 million in that grant they're giving it to phases. It sounded to me like locals, government's not picking which homes to give on that first one, it's the state is picking them through whatever process they're using. Then they'll go from, all right, we're going to get an appraisal, you know, go out, go on this, if you turn it down, we're going to down the list. So that's basically it.
Did they allude to by any chance what they would look to do with those properties? Want to say bye? I'm just thinking along the line similar where the old pathway, carry children, build, build their own boats right along that Ziverditch where that got leveled, that got transitioned over to Stark Parks to be preserved as green space. Would that be the same intent?
They had representatives from the Mesnean Watership there and they are doing a study of the whole watershed, which was 8,000 acres or something like that.
Yeah.
They know retention basins and detention basins they put in throughout the area, but they just don't want to spot one here, spot one there, they're not really effective as they should be. So they are doing that study. Now they're getting a warning system of some sort put on the home, on the properties along the Ziverditch and really bad areas.
Locking to on.
That will give you the height, you know, the, the correctly and everything that's going on, tell you when to evacuate actually, and then it keeps their numbers so they can look forward as part of this study to, to do some retention areas. Once they clear those houses, I'm sure there's going to be a great opportunity probably for retention in those areas because we know where it's going, so, you know, but nothing will be done, just from what I understood, quickly, retention warning eventually.
Okay, thanks for making sure we were represented there. Is there anything, trustee Lino, do you have anything under Concerns of Trustees? Okay, that closes Concerns of Trustees, Concerns of the Fiscal Officer.
Not fiscal.
Good, that takes us to the group of events for August 26, 2014, which I will soon move on.
I have a second.
Discussion, roll call. Mr. Lino?
Yes.
And Mr. Haas?
Yes.
There is a need for executive session, so being hereby resolved by the Plank Township Board of Trustees, Stark County, Ohio, to adjourn the executive session. It's 7:38 PM, and this regular meeting is authorized under Ohio Revised Code 121 Act 22G for the purposes and consideration of 1A, appointment of a public employer official; 1B, employment of a public employer official; 1C, dismissal of a public employer official; 1D, discipline of a public employer official; and 3, a conference with the law director or other retained counsel concerning pending or imminent court action.
Second.
Discussion, roll call. Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?